Meeting is being held in person. We are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden, Tom Posey.
Here.
Wolltinghouse.
Here.
Adam.
Here.
Jared.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Carpenter Davis.
Here.
Josie.
Here.
All right, we do not have any public hearings this evening, so we will jump into our special presentations. We do have several special presentations tonight. Our first presentation will highlight the new APWA 5600 stormwater criteria from Tom Jacobs, chief resilience officer with the Mid-America Regional Council. Tom, come on up.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I wanted to take about 10 minutes to walk you through a very quick presentation. We're working together with 30 local communities and the American Public Works Association chapter here in Kansas City to update our regional stormwater engineering standards. And so my intention tonight is to really let you know this is going on. Word about the midpoint of the project. In about a year, we expect to be able to present these new standards to APWA members for a chapter-wide vote, roughly 1,000 engineers in town who make up that organization. And typically after that happens, local governments then consider adoption of the standards locally. And most local communities adopt APWA standards for streets, sidewalks, storm sewers, and other matters. And so our hope with this project is to develop regionally consistent standards that are more resilient, save more money, or development friendly, protect water quality, reduce flood risk, provide all these different kinds of benefits and different kinds of ways. So can you jump the slides for me? Standing. So we last did this in 2003. That was the last time these standards were updated. And so you can imagine in 21 years, there's changes in how we understand and use data and technology. The whole field has evolved and there's a new generation of understanding about how to better manage stormwater. And so we're trying to, go ahead, next slide. We're trying to go ahead and modernize this whole process. So next slide. What, so what we did to start this off is there was a group of folks, about 10 public city and county engineers, 10 consultants, and some other stakeholders around the community. And we built a consensus on a set of principles, how we might contemplate or conceptualize what a new generation of standards might look like. And from there, we, the APWA board, accepted those recommendations and suggested we go ahead and work to update these standards. And they asked Mark to facilitate the process. So from there, what we did is we essentially passed the hat to raise the resources to do this. And in the first phase of the project, we raised $790,000. And so we, that money has funded the first phase of the project, which we completed in January. And we're well into the second phase and we hope to be done by next January. And so these management stakeholders, you can see them here, these are everyone who's helping to support this project. I don't, I'm not sure if mission contributed funds or is covered by the contribution from the county through the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee. I should have double checked before today. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't double check before the meetings. We absolutely appreciate your contribution. And so every, all of the participating communities have formed a management committee that are guiding all the major decisions that are happening in this process. What should go in the manual, what it should look like, what the methods should be, what are, what's the driving goals and vision, all of that. And we worked together to go through a process to hire a consulting firm. We hired a team led by Burns and McDonald's that also includes Black and Beach, Virio, and a national organization called the Center for Watershed Protection. So we literally have some of the smartest people in the country leading us through this process. We've had incredibly high levels of engagement in the first phase. I think we touched 350 people through surveys, through focus groups, and our different management committees. And in this next phase, again, we have technical work groups that include city and county representatives, faculty from area universities, nonprofits, developers, technical experts. One of the things we heard at the very beginning is make sure this thing's development friendly. So it's not another thing that'll galvanize the development community and say, no, it's just more cumbersome regulation. We think we can do this thing in a way that is more streamlined and gives better results in terms of public management of infrastructure and, and community resilience. So I've got a few slides. I'm just going to go pop through them very quickly. So next slide. So why does this matter? It saves money. It's going to facilitate development. It's going to be more efficient. It's going to reduce flood damage. What we have here is a layered approach. The idea is, conventionally, we've tried to get rid of water as fast as we can. It falls on the ground and we try and get it into a storm drain and shove it away as fast as possible, which is a really good way of keeping sites dry. But it typically pushes problems downstream. And so somebody's got to deal with that water. And the newer approaches are trying to hold on to it and filtrate as much as you can, slow it down, spread it out, and then take the water that you couldn't hold on to on your site and push it downstream in ways that minimize risk. And so that's really the approach. You know, we believe that in doing so, there's, there's a lot of infrastructure around the whole region that's degrading. There's, and I'm sure it's true in Mission, it's true everywhere. We've got a lot of pipes in the ground. It costs a lot to replace them. We believe with these new methods that we're going to be putting less pipe in the ground, which would save a lot of money. Next slide, please. And at the same time, we want to promote multiple benefits. And so we're trying to do a whole bunch of stuff at one time. These new engineering approaches would reduce flood risk and they would protect water quality. But we're hopefully creating a higher quality public realm that's helping to create other kinds of community benefits, whether it's more walkable tree-lined streets, or it's parks that are, that are prettier, better managing water in more sophisticated ways. So the new standards result in more longevity and efficiency. There's all, we're all subject to a world of different federal regulations around stormwater. And so these regulations will facilitate compliance for every, every local government and, and avoid future penalties. And so we're, by optimizing the system, right? We can reduce how much pipe we're putting in the ground. We can reduce upsizing pipes or can extend the life of existing infrastructure. The new manual should be easier for everyone to use. So back in 2003, go to the next slide, we generated a couple of different things. We updated the engineering standards. We also created a new product that was called the BMP Manual or Manual of Best Management Practices to Protect Water Quality. These two things are going to merge into one right now. Some communities use one or some use both. They don't speak to each other very well. So this new piece is gonna be just a whole lot cleaner. There's going to be a lot of better guidance for development. And so the consulting team is working up a variety of case studies on prototypical sites to try and illustrate what we're talking about in ways that are just clear. And as we, you know, I've been spending most of my life, the last several years, working on climate resilience. And so, you know, when we talk about climate resilience, there's three main threats that we're looking at being, three main natural hazards that would be exacerbated by climate change in our metro area, which are extreme fleet, extreme heat, flood, and drought, right? And so when we think about resilience as it relates to water, these standards would make a really big difference. And so the previous slide that talked about multiple benefits, I mean, this is, this is the kind of stuff that we're talking about. It's, and we think that we can deliver it in ways that are, that are cost-effective and that add value. So this slide, this is sort of a riff on, on our historical practice, right? The slide on the bottom right, many or most of our streams in our metro area look like that. They're deeply incised because of just more water getting routed through our natural systems in ways that the streams just, you know, historically didn't have to handle. And so we believe that we can literally turn our water into more of an asset and protect our natural environment at the same time. So what can you do to be involved in this project? We did give you a fact sheet. Share it with any and all. If you have thoughts. We talk with Stephanie regularly and welcome any comments from any of you as we move forward. But in essence, my, my goal tonight was to let you know this is coming. To hear any thoughts, comments that you might have and to queue you up for a decision point that hopefully will be in front of you in about a year. And so it won't catch you cold and we'll be able to dive in in as much detail now or then to answer any questions you might have. So there might be one or two more. Oh, the other participating partners, some of the folks on this slide are some of the folks who participated in our focus groups in the fall and who will be involved in our technical working groups this summer. And we, we've had a broad swath across the community. And it includes all of the smartest people on this issue in the metro. And so we're trying to be super inclusive and evolving not just the technical people, but the development community and nonprofit community, other interested parties from around the community. So I think that's where I stop. And you've got my email up there. If you want to reach out to me, I'd be happy to chat with anybody anytime.
Any questions for Tom? Yeah, Debbie?
I have a question. I don't know what you're developing relative to individual cities or how it would in past with Mission. But one of my biggest issues is all the projects we have pending, there's no, nothing out there recommending pervious parking. And all the concrete you have, the pervious parking element seems to really fit into alleviating stormwater pumps and it's not addressed. I wondered if that's going to be one of the options addressed in.
Hundred percent. Yeah, it is. And so the idea of trying to hold on to as much of the initial water that's falling from, from the sky on a site, there's a variety of ways you can do that. And that's one of the ways that we all know works well.
Thank you.
Yeah, Leah?
So this will have recommendation for new developers as they come into cities and want to build on how they can best contribute to the overall stormwater plan. I love it. Thank you.
But we do, we, we're going a step further and there's quite a lot of debate about this. The, the last set of standards were only about new development. These standards will also take on redevelopment. And so the debates that we're having are, well, what are the trigger points at which point, you know, when new standards would become effective and how do we evaluate them? How do we keep it simple, but yet achieve the kinds of outcomes? So absolutely on new development and also on redevelopment. So that's, that's a really significant change from before.
I know on that redevelopment slide, it looked like Northeast Johnson County is well represented in your stakeholder group. I know we run, we've run into challenges with some of the more green solutions with limited space, you know, with power channels constrained with 100-year-old development and things like that. So will the manual take into account those pieces as well?
You know, it's, it's, it's more about site development than say about stream restoration. So Rock Creek is a complicated entity, right? So I think the goal of this menu would be if there's a site that's developing or redeveloping in the Rock Creek watershed, it would reduce perhaps how much runoff reaches the creek. But the restoration and management of a waterway like that is, has a whole lot of complexity that's outside the scope of this project.
Any other questions for Tom?
Thank you.
I would say it's important to note too that, I mean, there are standards in place. And so, for example, not only in private development projects, but in order for us to be eligible for SMAC funding, our projects have to be designed to these same standards as well. So it's kind of across the board.
And amongst all the stakeholders who are leading this, the, the leadership at Johnson County Stormwater is involved in every step of the way here. And so we're in lockstep and trying to do something that works for them, you know, Kansas City, Independence, UG, everybody else.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is an end of session legislative update from Senator Ethan Corson.
Well, thank you so much for having me here. I really appreciate this opportunity to give you a brief update. First, I want to start by just thanking you for your service. I really appreciate it. We are really lucky, I think countywide, but particularly in, I will say in my Senate district, have a lot of really tremendous local government entities and governing bodies that I get the privilege of working with. And this is certainly one of them. So just thank you for stepping up and for serving your community. It really, really does make a big difference and it's one of the reasons why I think Northeast Johnson County is such a great community to live in. I also want to say I really appreciate Mission for a couple of reasons. One is that I do a monthly town hall every month at the Sylvester Powell Center. So it's normally on the fourth Saturday of every month, but at 9:00 AM. But we've got a, a couple Saturdays where we're doing it on, or a couple Saturdays we're doing it like this month because of Memorial Day. We're actually doing it this Saturday at nine o'clock. So we really appreciate the Powell Center for being such a great host and a wonderful place to do that. And I really also appreciate our wonderful Mission Police Department for helping me install a particularly tricky car seat for our seventh month old son. I had to call in the experts and, and they were really, really awesome. So our son is riding safe in, in the car seat that they helped me install. So I thought I would touch on three or four issues that I thought would be kind of relevant for local governments. And then I'd be glad if we have time to take any questions. I really think that we've got some pretty good news overall in terms of this session with respect to local governments. A lot of it was naturally somewhat defensive, so things that I think we were able to stop from happening. The first thing was we've continued to see this bill. This was actually the second time in three years that it's been vetoed. This is the, what I call the ban on the ban. This is the bill that would ban cities from restricting the use of single-use plastics. And so we've seen not many cities, but Lawrence is one example where they have tried to take affirmative steps to limit the use of single-use plastics. And there was been a legislative effort to stop cities from having the authority to do that. I've always opposed that legislation because I really think, again, that that should be your decision to make as to whether or not that's appropriate for a particular community. I, I had a really interesting conversation with another one of my mayors. And the mayor said, well, so you think that we should just ban these, these single-use plastics? And I said, I really have no idea whether that makes sense for your community. But I think that ultimately that should be your decision and the decision of your locally elected officials to decide whether or not that is appropriate for your particular community. So again, I don't really necessarily have a position on that one way or the other. But I do think that you, as the locally elected officials for your community, should be the ones making that decision with input from your stakeholders and your constituents. So that bill did pass the legislature and it was vetoed. And they did not try to take up a veto override because it, it didn't pass the first time with enough votes that they would have been successful in that. So that was, I think, a win for local control and for our, our local government entities. The second is another kind of repeat offender, so to speak, that we've seen, which is the government competition bill. So this has come in slightly different permutations since I've been in the legislature. But in general, it's meant to say that if a city or a county opens up something like a daycare or a restaurant or a coffee shop, that any business could arguably say is competing with it, that it should be entitled to a rebate on property taxes. And that bill did pass the legislature this year. It's currently sitting on the governor's desk. I have not spoken to her directly about it, but it, it is something that she's vetoed before. I know that the Kansas League of Municipalities is asking for a veto. I feel reasonably confident that it'll be vetoed again. It is packaged with some other things that I think have fairly broad support. But, but I think that this is probably enough to sink that, that bill. And I think that something I'll get to in a minute, that we kind of want to clear the, the tax slate, so to speak, for our upcoming special session. So I would anticipate that that would again be vetoed. And it's something that I've always opposed because similar to the plastic bag ban, I, I think that this is an example, whether it's daycare, restaurants, coffee shops, whatever it may be, where I think local governments are actually acting in response to demand from their constituents. That it's something that they've expressed that this is filling a need in their community that local government is being responsive to. And I think that there's a shared goal at the state level, at the county level, at the city level to try to maintain or lower property taxes on our residents. And the way that I look at legislation like this is if we start taking property taxes off of all of these different commercial entities, it's kind of like squeezing a balloon, that ultimately that is going to effectively be a tax increase on our residential property owners, which is the last thing that I would want to support as a legislator. So I, again, I'm reasonably confident in telling you that that will be vetoed. That is, that is my hope. And as with the plastic bag ban, I'm kind of hoping that we've seen these now enough times that unless there's a significant change in the makeup of the legislature next session, that hopefully we can maybe put these, these issues to bed. Not directly a local government priority, so to speak, but something that I know that we all support and is so integral to our community is a public education. And so one area that we were very successful with this legislative session is we were able to obtain for the sixth consecutive year constitutional funding of our public schools, K through 12. And this year, we were additionally able to secure a $75 million increase for special education services, which has been lacking. The state has not been meeting its, its obligation to fund special education at the 92% that the state statute requires. So the, the $75 million increase is a one-time increase. What folks like myself and others had hoped for was that we would have a commitment for future increases. So we would be increasing it not just for one year, but then increasing it $75 million in future years until we were meeting our statutory obligation. We weren't able to get that unfortunately, so we just got a one-year commitment of $75 million. So we will have to take that issue up again next legislative session. But certainly it's a step in the right direction and that's positive. So that combined with the full funding, I think, is, I would categorize it as relatively good news for our public schools. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is taxes. And so we've been really, as you've probably been following in the news, trying to arrive at a tax package that everybody could agree on, and that's proved challenging. So there is a bill that was passed by the legislature that the governor has said that she is going to veto and she's going to call a special legislative session. That'll probably happen sometime we're hearing in early June. And I think that the, the challenge really with the package, and I'm glad if there are questions to talk more detail about what's in it and, and more about my thoughts. But to summarize, I think the challenge is the reason I ultimately couldn't support it, even though there's a lot of good things in there that had broad bipartisan support, really came down to two reasons. The first is that I worried about going from, we currently have a three-tiered structure on our state income tax. This bill would have us go down to a two-tier. I think that that's probably puts us on a glide path within a few years to have a flat tax, which I think is regressive and I think it's unaffordable for the state. So that gives me some pause, but probably the biggest reason that both myself and Governor Kelly have reservations about the package is just its overall size. There are, again, are a lot of good things in it that we do support. I wish we would have had the opportunity to consider them as individual measures instead of in one giant bill. But when you look at the overall tax package, it would, within a few years, drain all of our reserves. So we'd be at about zero by fiscal year 2028 in terms of our current budget surplus. And we would be spending, it, it escalates from about $488 million. It goes up to about $602 million. We would be spending more than we'd be taking in by those amounts. So it's not something that I felt like could be sustained in future years. And that's something that's really important to me. The last thing we want to do is, I think, confer benefits on our citizens. And then in a couple of years, have to come back to them and say, oh, I'm sorry, we're going to need to put that tax back on. So I think we're all looking for something that can be sustained in future years. So again, I'm deeply appreciative to you for your service. To the extent time permits, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have about these or any other issues in the legislature this session.
Questions for the senator? Yeah, Leah?
So I just want to make sure I understand with the, the school money, that's $75 million for this coming year, but then it goes back down to what it was before this $75 million was put on?
No, that, no, I didn't explain it well. It's $75 million. That increase is built into future years. But what we had hoped for was essentially a $75 million increase this year, $150, $150 million increase the following year, and that we would build off these increases. Because in total, we're about to get to, so state statute says that the state needs to reimburse school districts for the excess costs of special education at 92% of those costs. It varies pretty widely by districts because we have obviously urban, suburban, rural districts. But to give you an average, we, we think we're probably at high 60s in terms of what school districts are getting reimbursed. So for Shaw, for Shawnee Mission, for example, that comes out to about $8.1 million a year that they're not being reimbursed for, that they should be being reimbursed for under state statute. So they're taking that money out of their general fund and then having to spend that on special education expenditures that they're not being reimbursed for. So it essentially is less money for every student because that depletes the general fund in a manner that it shouldn't be. So it is a $75, $75 million increase in future years. But unless we, the, the goal was to kind of increase it a little bit this year, a little more the following year, a little more. So without that, we still won't get to 92%. But we thought that getting the $75 million, the million dollars this year was an offer worth taking. And then we could hopefully continue to advocate for future increases. So we will be increasing it $75 million over the base, but we won't be further increasing it next year.
And what is the argument against that? It presses me.
So there, a couple of different arguments have been made. I've, I've supported Governor Kelly's proposal to get us to the 92% on kind of a graduated path. But the arguments that I've heard from colleagues who don't support it really are twofold. One is they just question kind of whether it's necessary. I mean, they feel like we're already spending a significant amount of our state general fund every year is on our K-12 system. So out of our whole budget, it's about 52% of our budget is K-12 education funding. And so they feel like there's been a lot of money going into the system and that districts should be able to manage their, their programs, including special education, with what is currently being provided. And the second is that they've raised an issue with the formula. And so they don't like how the current special education formula contemplates this aid being dispersed. Again, I think that's kind of like arguing with the refs about a call that you don't like. I don't know. Nobody's really explained to me exactly what the problems with the formula are other than that it shows that we're not funding according to it. But they have expressed a desire, and that's, that was the reason that they said that they would do the funding for, the agreement was they'd do the funding for one year, and then that they wanted to take a look at the formula. So that does give me some heartburn because again, it's never been exactly clear what the issue with the formula is other than when you plug in the numbers, it shows that we're not funding according to it. But I think that in the 2025 legislative session, you will definitely see some effort to read, rework the special education formula. Because again, they, they have some math that, that shows that we actually are meeting the 92%. But we've kind of called that like magic math. I'm not sure how that really computes. And that's not the number that most folks in the education space have arrived at. And sorry, that, did you ask, was there a follow-up? I'm sorry there. Okay.
You did ask, answer my question and I appreciate you supporting special education as a mother of a special education child. It's super important. And I've seen teachers be very creative to fill that gap. But it would be nice if they didn't have to be so creative so they could just focus on, yeah, helping those children.
Yeah, and it's a huge, I'll just, to elaborate, it's a huge number. It's one in four of our students who are in the public education system in Kansas qualify under the sped category. Because one thing is each state gets to classify what they consider special education. And our definition is really broad and many folks don't realize this. They think of special education as, maybe we might have something in our mind of a kid with a certain challenge or disability that needs special education services. But the way Kansas defines it, and so the kids who also are struggling to get the services they need, is Kansas defines it as anybody who's in the gifted program as well is considered, quote, "special education." So it's a very broad definition and that's why it impacts so many kids. I think it's 330,000 across the state fall into the special education category.
So it's any of those that fall out of that small, normal category, either, either end.
Right.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, Debbie?
On that same line, I was going to ask what the increase had been. Do we have a pattern or could we see a data sheet that shows that we're? that we're adding more people into the pool of special education?
As far, as far as students who are going in, yeah, we have seen more and I think there's probably the biggest reason is that we're just better at diagnosing issues than we were years ago. And so as we become better at diagnosing things like dyslexia, for example, ADHD is another example. So I think some of it is just that when I was in school and probably some of us were in school, just a lot of these issues probably were still there, but they just were not as well diagnosed. And so now we have more students who, which I think is a good thing, are now able to be diagnosed. We can get them the help and the services they need. But we have seen an increase in the number of kids who fall into that designation.
Would that, with the increase in that eight point one million, would that give more teachers? Or would they increase their salaries any, or how would it impact the actual curriculum of teachers?
Yeah, that's a good question. It would vary widely by district. It is the way the statute reads is it is any expenditure that the district incur, incurs above and beyond kind of the base aid that they are allocated per student. So the way our education system is largely funded is that there's a very complex funding formula, but it takes into account basically the students that are in a district. And it says per, each student gets, the district gets a certain amount of money. This year it's about fifty-five hundred dollars per student. And that is what we consider the, quote, base state aid. So that's the money that goes to the school districts. So statute says that if you were incurring expenditures that go above and beyond expenditures that go, apply to base state aid, that's what you're supposed to, you're supposed to then be able to submit to the state essentially what those expenditures were and get reimbursed at ninety-two percent of those. And so it's really a reimbursement mechanism. So different districts would be spending that differently. It probably wouldn't be unnecessarily pay increases because those tend to be negotiated between the teachers and the given school districts. So those probably, it probably wouldn't be increases, but it could be adding paras. And I know that that's something that a lot of schools have struggled with is just trying to get additional support within those classrooms.
So we do a decent amount of state advocacy, including through Northeast Johnson County Coalition and help of um, LGR lobbyist lobbying firm. Do you have any sort of tips on what you think works, you know, across party lines? What messages are effective on behalf of local governments, or maybe what doesn't work so well?
Yeah, we've had a lot of success in messaging about local control. And that's how I have always tried to explain that that argument to my colleagues. And I think the league and other organizations do a really good job uh, of making that case. Cause you know, I've always said again, Kansas is kind of a, in a wonderful way, a really diverse state. And so, you know, my view of what works in, for example, mission, that may not work in Ulysses, Kansas, right? And we really need to have the people who are in those communities every day, who are elected by their residents of those communities, making decisions about how those residents can best be served because we have such a complex mix of urban, rural, suburban that I've always felt like it's just best that we try to, to the extent possible, really empower those local officials, whether it's our school boards, whether it's our counties, whether it's our city councils, to make decisions in a way that is, is fitting the unique needs of those local communities. So a lot of our, our rural uh legislators have really you know, grasped onto that. We've been lucky that we have a couple of my colleagues uh, on the other side of the aisle have been in local government. So there's kind of a keen appreciation for the, the needs and the important role that local government plays. So I think that messaging has been really good. I'd be remiss if I said, because I, I know it's part of the platform, uh, kind of a disappointment. I hate to end on, on a disappointment has been the continued failure to to pass Medicaid expansion, which has been supported by all of the cities I represent, uh, all of our chambers of commerce. And that's one that I've struggled with, probably have found that in my first term, probably most vexing uh, that we haven't been able to get that done because there is, I think, such a real base of support for it. And I think it would be really helpful to uh, communities across Kansas. So uh, I appreciate that that is part of the platform. It would encourage you to keep it in there and certainly something that I'm going to continue to advocate for in the Senate.
Any final questions? Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck with the special session.
Yes, thank you. Take care.
All right, our third presentation tonight is a proclamation recognizing this week, May twelfth to May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four as National Police Week. Each May, our nation salutes the men and women who put their lives on the line every day to maintain public safety. On Peace Officers Memorial Day and during Police Week, we not only mourn the heroes taken from us because they chose to serve, we also recognize all of those who have, who have dedicated their lives to this important work. Our law enforcement officers have tough jobs, regularly working in dangerous and difficult conditions, highly tense situations, often facing challenges deeply rooted in systemic problems and broader social issues. Mission is committed to ensuring our dedicated police officers receive the support and recognition that they have earned. Chief Madden, would you please come forward to accept the proclamation and pass along the council's thanks and appreciation for the work of the men and women of the Mission Police Department? Thank you. Chief, do you want to have any, make any comments? Oh, sure.
All right, everyone up here at me.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, this, this week is often looked at as it's a, it's celebration, but also somber, especially somber. This year is Officer Oswald has put on the wall. Um, and to support that, um, the Fairway Police Department has sent the majority of their staff to Washington uh, to be there for that, for those ceremonies. And um, our staff has stepped up, uh, working in their city to cover their, their shifts and calls. So uh, it's much appreciated, but not surprising. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is a proclamation recognizing May as Building Safety Month in Mission. Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role the largely unknown guardians of public safety within our communities play, our local code officials. These are the people who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to the health and economic vitality of Mission. Mission is pleased to observe Building Safety Month, asking our residents to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investments at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Mr. Scott, would you please come forward to accept the proclamation? Then our final proclamation tonight recognizes Saturday, May eighteenth as Kids to Parks Day. This day empowers families to embrace what they can to do out, can do outdoors at America's parks, public lands, and waters, while encouraging kids to lead a more active lifestyle. Um, due to weather in honor, honor of Kids to Parks Day, our Parks and Recreation Department hosted their annual Kids to Parks Day event on Saturday, May third, at the Powell Community Center, originally scheduled for one of our outdoor parks. Uh, our Parks and Recreation staff work hard throughout the year to promote the benefits and rewards of an active lifestyle. Mr. Almeny, will you please accept this proclamation on behalf of your staff?
Perfect. Thank you, Ryan. Keep our social media moving. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, that concludes our special presentations this evening. We do not have any items related to the issuance of notes or bonds, so we will move into our consent agenda. Our considered agenda has six items tonight. Our council committees met on May first and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, now would be the time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed, items four A through four.
F.
F. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing, sorry, what? Seeing none, Robin, please call roll. Josie?
Aye.
Wolfinghouse?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Loudon?
Yes.
Chumpozzi?
Aye.
Schminn?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up we have public comments. This is for if any members of the public would like to make a comment on items that are not included on our agenda tonight, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you're a part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Have anyone online, Robin? Seeing no hands in the audience, so we will move into Planning Commission. We do not have any items from the Planning Commission tonight, so we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Ryer, will you please provide a report from Finance Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on May first and considered two items. The meeting minutes were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. A resolution transferring benefits of the performance agreement for the fifty-eighth Knoll multifamily redevelopment project will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. The governing body previously adopted Resolution Number one-one-six-eight on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, determining the city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds in an aggregate amount not to exceed twenty million dollars to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a three-story, seventy-seven unit multifamily housing project located at five-eight-zero-eight Knoll Avenue. The IRBs provided a seventy percent property tax abatement for the project for a period of ten years. The resolution of intent also approved a performance agreement with Mojo Built LLC, the developer of the project, which set forth specific terms related to, related to the property tax abatement, including the designation of ten percent of the units as attainable housing and achieving a minimum of one globe under the US Green Buildings Green Globes rating system. The city was recently contacted by an attorney representing At Home Apartments of KC LLC, who has been in negotiations with Mojo Built LLC to purchase, complete, and own the project. At Home Apartments has been in business of developing and operating multifamily real estate projects for more than twenty years. At Home Apartments of KC LLC has reviewed the specific terms and conditions of the performance agreement and is prepared to meet all obligations contained in the agreement. Pending a successful closing in the coming weeks, At Home is prepared to commence construction of the project by the July first, twenty twenty-four milestone included in the agreement. During the May first committee meeting, Councilmember Choji highlighted a potential typographical error in the legal description for the project. He was correct, and after further review, staff has presented a completely updated legal description for the property to reflect the updated plat that was filed with Johnson County. Mayor, I move the city council adopt the resolution approving the assignment of benefits provided through Mission Resolution Number one-one-six-eight from Mojo Built LLC to At Home Apartments of KC LLC and authorizing execution of an assignment of assumption for the perform, of the performance agreement.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second. First, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council, oh, sorry. Yep, come on up.
Hi, I'm, excuse me, I'm Tom Jensen from, on behalf of At Home Apartments of KC. Uh, met everyone a couple of weeks ago. We remain on track for the July first, so there are no changes, no, no wrinkles, no problems.
Great, thank you. Any council discussion or questions? Yes, Debbie?
Do we know what prompted this sale between Moffett and?
I think Mister, I think that question was posed to Mister Jensen. I was obviously not here at the May committee meeting. Um, and I think it was, in reviewing the minutes, I think the response that was given was that I think, um, Mr. Moffett is potentially nearing retirement, has traditionally been a single-family home developer as opposed to the developer of a multifamily project. Uh, and so I don't, I don't know what all of the specifics were, but um, I think those were a couple of contributing factors to that decision.
Any further comments or questions? Robin, please call the roll.
King?
Aye.
Wolfinghouse?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Loudon?
Yes.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Schminn?
Aye.
Chumpozzi?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, perfect. Councilmember Loudon, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on May first and considered nine items. The meeting minutes, PCC cardio equipment lease purchase, Mohawk Parks Phase Two testing and inspection services, award for the Row Avenue Construction Inspection Contract, easement acquisition for the twenty twenty-four street preservation project, and the twenty twenty-four localized drainage projects. And obligation of funds for Operation Greenlight Grant were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. The award for the Row Avenue Construction Contract Interlocal Agreement for Stormwater Systems Funding for the twenty twenty-four Street Project and the twenty twenty-five Street Preservation Project Design will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Seven B Award, or Award Row Avenue Construction Contract, which is part of our twenty twenty-four Cars Project. On April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the city council approved a resolution, a resolution adopting the five-year Cars Street Improvement Program for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight, which included the Row Avenue Rehabilitation Project from Johnson Drive to Sixty-third Street in twenty twenty-four. This joint project with Roland Park, Fairway, and Prairie Village with Mission administrating the project. The project bid in April twenty twenty-four and bids were open on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. There were four bidders with Amnio Brothers Company Incorporated submitting the lowest and most responsive bid. Mission will fund approximately sixty-three percent of the total construction cost, with the balance shared proportionately among Roland Park, Fairway, and Prairie Village. The total construction uh, and construction inspection project costs for this project are estimated to be one million four hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents, which was below the engineer's estimate for the project. Interlocal agreements between Mission, Roland Park, Fairway, and Prairie Prairie Village and has already been approved and executed by each agency to share the net project cost. Construction is anticipated to begin June, July, twenty twenty-four and is estimated to be completed in December of twenty twenty-four. Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with Amino Brothers Company Incorporated for construction of the Row Avenue Rehabilitation Project, Johnson Drive to Sixty-third Street, twenty twenty-four Cars Rehabilitation Project in amount not to exceed one million four hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council questions or discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Ryer?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Schminn?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Wolfinghouse?
Aye.
Hayden Chumpozzi?
Aye.
Motion case.
Seven C Interlocal Agreement for Stormwater Systems Funding for twenty twenty-four Street Project. Due to the aging stormwater systems throughout Johnson County, the county makes additional funding available for replacement of stormwater infrastructure with a condition rating higher than three point two. The funding is a fifty-fifty split between the county and participating city and funds replacement of existing infrastructure. Cities are required to cover costs for stormwater system upgrades such as increased size or additional new stormwater infrastructure. Staff submitted an application in twenty twenty-three to the county to replace all eight stormwater assets for the twenty twenty-four Street Rehabilitation Project and other capital projects. The Interlocal Agreement under consideration specifies the county's policy and procedures, stormwater system renewal projects, and the county's contribution towards renewal project costs and commits the city's funds to the project. The city's funds have already been, or are being expanded in connection with the street program, or being expended, I'm sorry, in connection with the street program. Approval of the Interlocal Agreement will allow staff to apply for reimbursement of twenty twenty-four stormwater infrastructure associated with the twenty twenty-four Street Program as costs are incurred. Mayor, I move the city council approve an Interlocal Agreement with Johnson County for the twenty twenty-four Stormwater Renew- Renewal project known as twenty-twenty-four Mission Street Repairs.
Second.
Motion and second, any public comment on this item? Any council comments or questions? Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, I just want to underscore the reason this is on the regular agenda tonight. Um, you know, we have a lot, a lot of homes and businesses that. Stormwater issues affect, uh, and, and we see that and hear that from our constituents and our businesses all the time, so. Um, you know, appreciative of the county and the staff's work to, to make these, these agreements happen and. And fix those problems and, and deal with those trouble areas that can, can really be, you know, difficult for, for people that are affected by them.
For sure. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Schmin.
I.
Josie.
I.
Hayden Chumpozzi.
Hi.
Loudon.
Yes.
Kring.
I.
Ryer.
I.
Motion carries.
Seventy, twenty-twenty-five Street Preservation Project Design. The city strives to dedicate approximately two million dollars annually to the residential street preservation program. Which is guided by pavement condition index data and geotechnical analysis by Olson. In order to maintain progress with the program and to aid in securing outside funding. The city tries to design each program one year in advance of construction. The twenty-twenty-five Street Preservation Program will include sixty-first Street from Broadmore Street to Barclay Street. Sixty-second Street from Glenwood Street to Lamar Avenue. Reed's Road from Johnson Drive to Fifty-Eighth Street and Beverly Drive from Dearborn Drive to Reed's Road. The task order from Olson encompasses all necessary design services for the twenty-twenty-five program with a total cost not to exceed. Two hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars. Mayor, I move the city council approve a task order with Olson for engineering services for the proposed twenty-twenty-five Street Preservation Project. In amount not to exceed two hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Kring.
I.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Ryer.
I.
Loudon.
I.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Josie.
I.
Schmin.
I.
Hayden Chumpozzi.
I.
Motion case.
All right, concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we move into unfinished business, but we do not have any unfinished business tonight, so we will move into our new business. We do have one item of new business. We will now begin the selection of chairs and vice chairs for our council committees. We'll start first with our Community Development Committee and first vote on the chairperson, followed by the vice chairperson. We will then do the same for our Finance and Administration Committee. I would now open the floor for nominations for Community Development Committee Chair.
Yes.
So I do have someone I could nominate, however, if there's someone who has not been a committee chair yet, who I haven't spoken to. Please feel free to nominate yourself at this time as well. So you know further nominations, I would like to nominate Mary Ryherd for Chair of the Community Development Committee.
All right, do we have any other nominations for Chair? Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead. Yes, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any, or nomination and a second, do we have any other further nominations for CDC Chair? Seeing none, I would now entertain a motion for election of the Community Development Committee Chair.
Mayor, I move to nominate Mary Ryherd for Chair of the Community Development Committee with a term expiring May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Josie.
I.
Schmin.
I.
Loudon.
I.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Kring.
I.
Ryer.
I.
Hayden Chumpozzi.
I.
Motion carries.
All right, we will now take any and all nominations for Community Development Committee Vice Chair. Yes, Brian?
Uh, I nominate myself. For the position of Community Development, uh, Community Development Committee Vice Chairperson.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I could also nominate you for F and A, if you're interested in being Chair for F and A. Sure, yeah, no, you don't know pressure. No, 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 I, yeah, I'm, I'm fine doing that.
Okay, do we need to withdraw?
I withdraw.
We did. Would you like to withdraw your nomination?
Draw my nomination of myself for.
Okay.
Chair.
The second, who seconded?
Ben and I both.
I.
Oh, yes, you consent from the withdrawal.
Yes.
Uh, without, it was tied with Ben and Debbie, so Ben, we'll say Ben seconded it. All right, so that, that nomination has been withdrawn. Do we have other nominations for CDC Vice Chair? Yes, Trent?
I would like to nominate Josephah Hayden Chumpozzi to be Vice Chair of the Community Development Committee with a term expiring May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All right, all right. We have a nomination in multiple seconds. Uh, do we have any other nominations for this position? Right, seeing none, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, the nomination and the motion, I got tripped up.
All right.
Yeah, Trent, so read your motion.
Mayor, I.
No.
Mayor, I nominate Josephah Hayden Chumpozzi for the position of Community Development Committee Vice Chairperson with a term expiring May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Now, is there any further discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Kring.
I.
Chump, Hayden Chumpozzi.
Oh, hi. Hi.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Loudon.
I.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Josie.
I.
Ryer.
I.
Schmin.
I.
Motion carries.
All right, now we will now move on to Finance Administration. So are there nominations for Finance Administration Committee Chair?
Yes, Mayor, I nominate Brian Schmidt for the position of Finance and Administration Committee Chairperson with a term expiring May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further nominations? Get this right, this time hearing no further nominations, I would now entertain a motion for election of the Finance and Administration Committee Chair.
Mayor, I move, Mayor, I nominate Brian Schmidt for the position of Finance and Administration Committee Chairperson with a term expiring. May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Ryer.
I.
Kring.
I.
Schmin.
I.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Loudon.
I.
Josie.
I.
Hayden Chumpozzi.
I.
Motion carries.
All right, we will now take nominations for Finance Administration Committee Vice Chair.
Mayor.
Yes, Trent?
I would like to nominate Ben Josie for the position of Finance Administration Committee Vice Chairperson with a term expiring May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further nominations? All right, seeing none, I would now entertain a motion for election of the Finance and Administration Committee Vice Chair.
Happy to. Mayor, I nominate Ben Josie for the position of Finance and Administration Committee Vice Chairperson with a term expiring. May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chumpozzi.
Hi.
Schmin.
I.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Ryer.
I.
Loudon.
I.
Kring.
I.
Josie.
I.
Carpenter Davis.
I.
Motion carries.
All right, good job, everybody. Congratulations to our new chairs and vice.
So the record is clear, we have Councilmember Ryherd as Chair of the Community Development Committee. Vice Chair is Councilmember Hayden Chumpozzi. Chair of the Finance and Administration Committee, Brian Schmidt, Councilmember Schmidt and Vice Chair, Councilmember Josie. Right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Thank you all for stepping up to serve. All right, there being no further business items for consideration, we'll move into comments from our city council. This is an opportunity for any comments from our council members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share this month? Yes, Trent?
I will take over the mantle from former Councilmember Davis and congratulate our new, uh, folks on leadership for committee meetings. Thank you for all that and look forward to watching you serve in the year to come.
Any other council comments? Yeah, Debbie?
Um, just a quick overview, I sit on the Solid Waste Commission for Johnson County and one of the key issues that we addressed. Last Wednesday evening was a potential new food waste distribution center. They are looking for several elements to support the center, including a place to have it. Um, and, and looking at various options for monitoring it, what it would entail, what the hours would be, et cetera. So anyway, when I have additional information, I do have a basic cost on it and it's nine point five million dollars. So the getting the funding, the placement and the procedures and policies all in place is still kind of undergo, we're going, undergoing that right now. But anyway, at my next meeting, I should be able to give you a better update of where we are on that. You know, it's, it's been a big issue with, with food problems and the way, food waste and where it goes and how it's managed. And, you know, places like Seattle have done a astounding job in putting that kind of thing together and we haven't really gotten to that yet. So it's got to be approved by several, several elements throughout Johnson County. But I think it's really, it's, it's got a good start and Burns and McDonald did a really good job. When I get the slides from the, the presentation that we had last Wednesday, I would forward them for consideration.
Great, thank you. Any other council comments? Seeing none, we will move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of our boards, commissions and committees. So first is Councilmembers Boltinghouse and Loudon for Sustainability Commission.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Loudon was unable to attend the last Sustainability Commission meeting, so I'll just provide a quick update from how that went. We met on May sixth here at City Hall. And one of the highlights of that discussion for me was a presentation, uh, by Mark. It was actually by one of our members, but it was a, a packaged video that Mark had produced. Highlighting our leadership on communities for all ages alongside other neighbor, uh, member cities around the retro. And I think one of my takeaways about that was sustainability can encompass a lot of different things besides just the traditional. Um, you know, composting, recycling, planting trees, all that sort of, um, quality bedrock. Um, items as well. So it was just really interesting to get that perspective and we had a nice discussion about that. Also, cut, um, Sustainability Commission Member Thedi, who is here in the audience tonight, gave an update about the scorecard. Um, that the commission is put together for developers and that was approved and ratified going forward and. Also just continue to be really impressed by the level of detail and impressive technical expertise that that group brings. To ask for those developers. And I didn't mention this in my previous update. Um, but when we met two months ago, we also met with the developer for, um, the Mill House Project. And just hearing some of those highly specific, highly technical, granular questions posed to her. It was a reminder to me too that I'm just appreciative to have that level of knowledge, uh, in-house to be able to bring those items up to the forefront. And I know that for the developers who, some of the questions helped, you know, think about where we're wanting to go for the city. So that's a, that's my update for this, for this one.
Great. Next we have Councilmembers Kring and Schmidt for Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
As part of our effort to, uh, to tour and familiarize ourselves with, uh, with the parks that we have. Um, so we met at Mohawk Park, Mohawk Park, um, which was great for me. It's not one that I live near, so I don't get out there a ton. Uh, and it was really great to see the progress that's coming along. Um, so did an actual walk around, reviewed a lot of the improvements, uh, that have both been made and are upcoming. Um, also wa, uh, talked through, um, you know, scheduling and, uh, progression to completion for Waterworks Park, which is scheduled to be. Uh, completed this summer along with the opening of Russian Elementary. Uh, one of the standouts for me, uh, mentioned earlier tonight, uh, there was the Kids to Parks. Uh, event that was supposed to take place, um, at Streamway earlier, uh, but due to rain was at the community center. What I thought was really standout and speaks to, I think, how well, uh, the commission and then the Parks and Recs. Uh, department is, is making inroads with the community is last year that event had eight people attend. Uh, and this year it was at three hundred and fifty. Um, so really a huge increase over just a year. So it's really exciting to see that type of, uh, enthusiasm and, uh, engagement within the community.
Great. Next, we'll hear an update from Councilmembers Ryherd and Josie on the Mission Magazine Editorial Board.
We have not met this month unless I just hallucinated that and.
You did not hallucinate that, we did not meet this month.
Yeah, so, uh, looking forward to the next meeting and kind of reviewing stories and, um, themes, so, yeah. We did have a new issue come out, right?
Yeah.
The next issue is currently in progress and will be, should hit mailboxes end of June, first part of July.
End of June, okay.
And then. There will be some very familiar faces in that.
And finally, we have Councilmember Carpenter Davis on Family Adoption Committee.
The committee has not met, but I had an opportunity to talk to the volunteers that have worked on this for several years and gather some data. About how many hours that they put into this project and such. And so I've given some of that information to Laura and Penn and look forward to talking to them and then presenting to the council and an update. You know, this, this program has been going on since two thousand and six and I'd like you to know all the great things we've done.
Great. Yeah, Debbie?
I apologize, I need to make it an entry change. I mentioned that it's the food waste distribution, it's, we're not distributing, we're collecting, it's a collection.
Yeah, Leah?
It took me a moment to look up the date, but we are having a Ward Two meeting on June fourth at Sylvester Powell. That's what it looked like on my phone, maybe I have it wrong.
I have June eleventh.
Okay, June eleventh.
Robin, are you double checking that one?
We can, uh, fact-check us, keeps us honest.
How did I get that wrong twice?
A lot of moving parts.
Right, while Robin's looking, I'll just say I don't have really anything under my mayor's report, other than I think Laura will touch on. We have some upcoming, uh, work sessions, so if members of the public are interested in the upcoming subject matter. Our work sessions are always, um, you know, open to the public to come observe as well. Yeah, you want to go ahead, Laura, and if you have any items to share under your report tonight?
Yes. Um, thank you. Uh, it's good to be back in person. I don't miss very many meetings, but, um. And I've never had to do a budget presentation, I hope I never do again via Zoom, so. Um, in your packets was, were the March twenty-twenty-four interim financial reports. Uh, April will come, w- we'll either send it, um. Probably April and May with June, this one was a little bit delayed because we were sort of focusing on wrapping up, uh, some work with the auditors. But wanted to hit just a couple of highlights there. Um, you know, we try to look at, uh, how sales tax is trending because that is our largest, uh, revenue generator in the general fund. You can kind of see, in terms of general sales tax, we're really trending about even with twenty-twenty-three. Um, use tax, we're still seeing some increase, uh, and increases there, but generally, uh, we're in line with sort of. Uh, historical averages and our estimated budgets, um. Projections, so. So we're still early in the year, obviously that's just three months in, but, uh, things are looking pretty good. We saw, um, if you go back to the February report, we did see, um. A, a reduction in, uh, our cash balance position, I believe it was about fifteen million. In, uh, in February, in March, we're sitting at thirteen point four million and that's largely the result of. The construction activity both on our street programs and our parks projects that are going on. So, so recall that at the end of twenty-twenty-two, we issued, um, the twenty-twenty-two A bonds to help accelerate some of that work. And so those bond proceeds sat in our fund balance, um, until we've needed them. So you will see some of that, uh, but still certainly our general fund, fund balances, um. At or above our projected levels. Um, and the only other thing I might highlight, uh, because it's a definitely a positive. Is the table on the fourth page of the executive summary looking at, um, cost recovery for the community center. So you'll note that when we adopted the budget for twenty-twenty-four, we were estimating about a forty-eight percent cost recovery this year, which again was. Trending up twenty-two and twenty-three, uh, were better. You'll recall we had some grant funds, a childcare aware grant. That was made available that really helped boost those numbers in twenty-two and twenty-three. But you can see at least, uh, twenty-twenty-four, as of March thirty-first, they were. as of March thirty first, they were trending at about sixty six percent cost recovery. So moving absolutely in the right direction, um, with the recommendations coming out of the feasibility study. So, um, you should have had a link in your packet to the full detailed report. Always happy to answer any questions on that. Excuse me, as the mayor said, um, we do have a work session scheduled for next Wednesday, May twenty second, starting at six P M. We are going to have two items on that work session. The first will be a presentation from the Bike Ped Plan Consultants. And, and, um, that presentation, and then the second item, uh, for discussion will be, um, proposed changes in regulations for short-term rentals. So we do anticipate at least, there's a lot of ground to cover and a lot of policy issues to cover on the short-term rentals. And so we don't anticipate that moving forward as an action item in June because we want to be able to present, talk through those things. I think we're going to need some more time to kind of work and evaluate where we want to end up. So, um, beginning of that conversation, and we will, we have been and we will continue to sort of publicize that. I do know there are members of the public who are interested in uh, both of those presentations. Um, I would just encourage you, I know we sent out a survey recently about availability for dates. Those dates when people were available have been plugged into your weekly calendar. So every Friday when you get that calendar, if you will, look at that, um, and I have to look at it every, every Friday when Robin and I put it together, and we're managing that, um, on an ongoing basis. But so we will have the work session on May twenty second. We will not have any meeting on the twenty ninth of May. So we have a fifth, um, Wednesday in May, no meetings. Um, we'll pick up our budget discussions again on June fifth at the, uh, council committee meetings. And then you'll recall that our legislative meeting in June moves traditionally would be on the nineteenth, but that's the Juneteenth holiday observed by the city. So our legislative meeting in June will be on the twenty sixth. So there won't be a work session. I think we have a work session scheduled. I have to look at my calendar, but I think we may have a brief work session ahead of the legislative meeting on the twenty sixth, but we'll confirm that Friday when we send that out. Um, did want to address a couple of other things. I know there was a question at the committee meeting about an updated PCI map uh, on the website from council member Chosey. Um, we actually had not produced that in the last round, but, um, public works director, um, Stephanie Boyce is working with, uh, GBA to get that updated. And I think in a couple of weeks, we would anticipate being able to publish that and get that information out on the website. Uh, we've been working from a spreadsheet, which isn't very user-friendly from an interface perspective. Um, I know we've had some conversations around, uh, over the last couple of years around transition of, uh, pool and memberships at the M-FAC from individual and family to individual only. Um, we've had some questions, uh, both last year and this year from a small handful of, uh, larger families in the community. And we've gone back, um, in the last couple of, really probably the last month and looked at some options, I think, because of some other things that were happening with the Super Pool Pass and some of our surrounding neighbors. Um, we don't have a really strong handle on trends with just one year of data. So we're leaving that pricing structure in place, but we are offering, and we began promoting it yesterday, and we'll continue to put it out there that for, um, members who uh, are members at the Powell Community Center can receive a ten percent discount on M-FAC memberships. Uh, I think it's an incentive to, um, to bundle and encourage people to use all of our amenities. And then, um, next year it will be an early bird special. We missed the boat on that this year, but we will be offering, starting this Saturday, the eighteenth through the twenty fourth, we'll be offering an additional sort of last push. Get your pool membership before the pool opens on the twenty fifth. So an additional, or ten percent, um, there. So if people have the opportunity, if they're PCC members, they'll be able to stack those, uh, and receive up to a twenty percent discount. Um, and then we will also, uh, work to really kind of promote the scholarship program that we've had in place for several years, excuse me, more broadly. And the last thing that I might touch on, I had a, uh, a question from council member Chosey today, and I owe you an email response, but, um, it's related to our discussions that we've been having for the last couple of years around our, uh, energy efficiency codes uh, and building code adoption. There's been a tremendous amount of conversation internally and behind the scenes since the first of the year. Um, you may be hearing some things about, um, the po- potential conversations around, uh, the twenty twenty one code that was adopted by Casey Mo uh, last year. We, um, are not quite ready to come to you with a presentation, uh, but we're very close. I think sometime later this summer we'll be coming forward and really trying to sort of lay out the policy options, um, along with uh, the resources that we would need as a staff, um, should you want to move in the direction of adoption of either twenty twenty one or twenty twenty four codes. So, um, rest assured there, Mr. Scott can, can attest to the fact that there's a lot of conversation going on around that. And, and I think we've educated ourselves um, a lot in the last couple of months. So we'll look forward to bringing that forward and having that conversation in a work session. And Robin, I believe has some business updates.
All right.
Um, I can confirm that the Ward two meeting is June eleventh at six o'clock. Originally, we were hoping to have it at Anderson Park, but there is a Marlins Swim Meet that night, so it will be at the Powell Community Center. Um, I would also like to let you all know that if it works with your schedule, or please check your schedule. Uh, Laura and I have scheduled some, um, new headshots for all of you, so we can get, um, council member Hayden Chompsey in with some photos, um, and get some nice photos of the outdoors blooming things. So we're looking at, uh, June fifth for our committee meetings at five thirty. So if you have a conflict with that, or you can't be here right at five thirty, that's okay. We'll have the entire hour from five thirty to six thirty to get those photos done. But if that will not work for you, please let me know so we can look at other dates. Moving on to fun things, um, business openings, we welcome Legacy Fabrics, which is a new fabric and notions store that has opened on Johnson Drive at sixty one twenty four. And then I'm excited to let all of you know, especially council member Kring, who actually spilled the beans to me that Avalutos has opened um, at sixty eight forty six Johnson Drive. And Fola, my bestie, is a new tea and noodle shop that is coming right along at sixty one oh two Johnson Drive, and they hope to open by the end of the summer. Um, unfortunately, we've said goodbye to Wendy's and Mission this month, as most of you probably know. And then I would like to let you know that the Mission downtown businesses have put together a sidewalk sale on June fifteenth from ten A M to four P M. Um, it's being hosted by Fiorella's Boutique, Little Dude's, Truly Madly Depot, and Lulu's Boutique, but I think it'll probably encompass some more of the downtown business district businesses. So put that on your calendar. And then you may have seen on social media that, uh, Fox Four News does what's called a zip trip in the summertime. So they send their anchors out for their morning show on Friday mornings to different cities, um, and regions around around Kansas City, and they have chosen Mission. So we will be featured by them on June twenty eighth. Um, so we'll welcome Nick Vasos and Kristen Holloway to the Mission Market site. Um, they will do their entire broadcast from here from nine A M to ten A M. They will be live, so they do the weather and all of the new traffic, all the new things in the morning. So we have a really great opportunity to provide them with some food from local restaurants, give them some history about Mission, show them around some of our parks and buildings in the city. Um, we would love for all of you to be there. If it works with your schedule, bring your families. They welcome any audience members that can be there. Um, and it's just kind of a really fun way to celebrate our city in the summertime. So happy to answer any questions about any of those things.
Not about those things, but do we know what happened to the Mission Arts?
We don't know, actually. We didn't know anything about them until the Legacy Fabrics, which is opening in their space. Um, so that's why I didn't mention it because I don't have any information. There's been nothing we've been able to find on social media or on their channels. So I'm sorry, I don't have any information on that.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
All right, next would be executive session, but we do not have a need for an executive session this evening. So before we adjourn tonight, I just want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.